I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of October the 12th, 2017, to order at 6 o'clock PM, and ask our Assistant Clerk for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
I'm Kathy DiTillo, Deputy Clerk. Simski is out.
Deputy Clerk.
Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
I apologize, you're the Deputy Clerk. So if we could please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. And the first item is open forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to address the board for something not on the agenda, and I've been told there's none this month. So open forum will be closed. Moving on to reports. First one is my report. And on November the 9th is at our regular board meeting, I believe it is, November. We'll be celebrating our anniversary, leading up to the 100th anniversary in 2021, and we're going to unveil the second mural. And I know Trustee Barker's been instrumental in that. So that evening here will be, at that meeting, we'll be unveiling it. The Sister City Program, we've got a group of students coming over here to stay in Westmont for Thanksgiving week and the week after. They're looking for one or two host families to take these students in and show them, participate in Thanksgiving, and make them feel welcome. They'll be coming to Westmont November 10th through the 25th. So not only Thanksgiving, they'll be here for the Holidays Parade. So they'll get a chance to see a couple of our major events. So that's all I have, and I'll turn to our Deputy Clerk.
The 2017 State of the Village Address will be presented on Friday, November 3rd, at 8:00 AM at the Taiwanese Cultural Center at 55 East 63rd Street. And you can RSVP at westmontchamber.com.
Very good. Move on. Manager, you have anything?
No, sir.
I know you're not on. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is December 7th. And then I'd like to invite up Deputy Chief Riley for a few items.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. I just want to remind the public that this week is Fire Prevention Week. Tomorrow night is the Silent Parade that starts in Hinsdale, kicks off right at dusk about 7:00 PM, runs along Naperville Road, Chicago Avenue, from Hinsdale all the way through to Lisle. So we invite the public to come out with their flashlights and support the fallen firefighters who have perished over the years. It's usually about 60 departments that come out to participate in the Silent Parade. So it's a great showing to show the support. Second is, I just wanted to let everybody know, we had a flyer go out in water billing last week for free smoke detectors. The Fire Department got a grant for 100 free smoke detectors. Currently, we've already had 45, just in the first week, get reservations. The Fire Prevention Bureau goes out to your home and installs the smoke detector free of charge. So we still have about 50 smoke detectors that need to be given away. You can contact Chris Hardy, who is our Administrative Assistant in the Fire Prevention Bureau, at 630-981-6400. We just need the resident to fill out a small piece of paper with your name and address and information, and we'll set up a date and time for the Fire Prevention Bureau to come out and install that smoke detector. So another, you know, goes along with Fire Prevention Week, make sure we're changing our batteries, you know, get a smoke detector if you don't have one. So, any questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir. And then I'll, next, just like to invite up Police Chief. He has a few things to share as well.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. For an update on, we have our Kelly's Hollywood event next Tuesday, which is October 17th. We can still RSVP. We're up to 65 committed people to show up for that event. We did change the location, so now it's at the Fire Department side of 500 North Cass. Fire Department was nice enough to host us because they have a nice big bay, so we're going to put everybody inside there. We will also have our bounce house up in the back. So should be a good event. Still time to RSVP, so Tuesday, October 17th, at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And last but not least, I just wanted to thank Ryan Nero for bringing out the Cubs car tonight. It was great to get a good White Sox fan, our mayor, out, taking a good picture with the Cubs car. We couldn't get our Deputy Chief out. He said he fell down and hurt his leg or something. But he put a lot of time into that car. He's been touring Chicago with it. And hopefully, if you have some time tonight, check out all the pictures on Facebook and check out his stories. Really put a lot of time and energy into it, and it's just doing it for the good, to spread some positive energy, and I think it's nice to see. So turn the TV off if you are watching this, and get ready to watch the big game. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items. Westmont Special Events, we had, well, let me back up. Our first Fall Wine Festival event, tasting event, was a joint project between the Westmont Special Events, Dolce's, and Shaw Media. And it was a huge success. We had over 140 people in attendance, and that was last Saturday. So that worked out really, really well. We now have, in addition to the Wicked West Fest portion, we have a Zombie Pub Crawl, which will be held Saturday, October 28th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We have four Westmont businesses that are participating. We have Walsh's, Uptown, DJ Sports Bar, Grill, and Myths and Legends. $15 per ticket, per person. You have to be 21. But you sign up at westmondevents.com, and there will be a bus that will take you to each location. You'll be invited to spend time there, have a specialty drink, maybe something to eat, and an activity there. So it's going to be a funny event. It's again, 2:00 to 4:00 PM on Saturday, the 28th. During the Wicked West Fest, Westmont Special Events will be hosting a costume contest on October 21st, from 10:30 to 11:00. Contestants should meet at the parking lot near Toons Funeral Home on Cass and Irving. On that same day, don't miss the Trick or Treat Trail from 11:00 to 1:00, pumpkin smashing extravaganza, caskets on cass at 12:30, and the Haunted Forest from 5:00 to 9:30 in the Park District. All of our Wicked West Fest events can be found on the village website, westmontillinois, westmont.illinois.com. I think that's gov, isn't it? Anyway, another new Wicked West event, another Wicked West Fest event, Halloween decorating contest. We're inviting people to go on and sign up in three different categories, both your home, your business, and the best decorated neighborhood or block. So make sure you avail yourselves of that, put up your decorations, and get noticed online. And we'll be talking about who won the contest in November. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things this evening. First of all, Westmont First will meet Monday night at 6:00 PM at the Westmont Library. And then prior to this meeting, we had a Community Development Committee meeting. And they had very thorough reporting as to what's going on in the village with community development. One of the things that I would like to point out, that code enforcement is especially active, and they actually had 63 people that were out doing projects without permits, and code enforcement caught up with that. And the reason that's an important number to us is that, you know, we believe in code enforcement for the life safety aspect of it, as well as protection from contractors that may or may not be doing a good job for you, especially if you don't have any knowledge on roofing, or fencing, or whatever it happens to be. So code enforcement's alive and well, and doing a very effective job in community development. There are so many things happening under community development that I can't go into it. But if you would like additional information and the facts, feel free to contact the village at any time, and they'll get that information for you in his public record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Trustee Addington.
A few things. First one is maybe, and I say that because of the weather, tomorrow and Saturday, of course, is the annual Candy Day Drive for the Lions Club. Weather is a little suspect, but if you're out driving around in the morning, our afternoon rush hours, please be aware that you may see a bunch of lions in their orange and yellow vests. Don't try to hit them. Go around them. We're losing members as it is in organizations. But if you do see them, please contribute. The other thing is, all has to do with economic development. Monday night, there's going to be a grand opening at Westmont Village Apartments with their new community center clubhouse. And again, they've done a phenomenal job there with the remodeling and the upgrading, and the upgrading of the people who rent there. Last week, Economic Development took a tour of Magna Chilts, which is another one of those hidden assets here in town. It's another international company that has been with us for many, many years. There was a ribbon cutting back on September 27th at Aspired Living, attended by over 300 people. And of course, the BMW and Porsche expansion projects are still in the construction phase. And lastly, we want to introduce to all of you tonight, his name is Anthony Bonacanti. Anthony is the owner of Hit, let me see if I say this right, To Fit Martial Arts. They're at 1119 Fairview. They had their grand opening last night, and they're having a seminar. I think a lot of it goes for kids and for other things. But I'm going to turn over to Anthony. Welcome to Westmont, and tell us a little bit of what you're going to do out there.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you guys having me. It's an honor to stand before you. Actually, when I was in my early twenties, it's funny, life goes full circle. I used to work at Caccino Roma, which was right down Ogden, and we ran an awesome business there. It was one of the best times of my life. I was there for four years. So went out and saw the world a little bit, and it's funny how it comes all back to Westmont. So we really appreciate being back here. My wife and I opened up Hit to Fit. I've been in martial arts for about 13 years, doing it nonstop, have been in the cage, have fought. It was my dream. Got into it a little bit older in life, so I didn't have visions of anything too much, but I wanted to experience it. But through it, what we've seen, we have a message out there. And the reason I'm wearing this hat is, the real message is anti-bullying. This is Anti-Bullying Month. October is Anti-Bullying Month. We're having an anti-bullying seminar, free workshop for anybody that wants to show up at our place on the 28th of October. And we're going to try and teach the kids, as much, and adults, as much as we can about anti-bullying. It's a much more layered effect than you would think. We have to get in the minds of the children and that are in the moment not to pay attention to it. And that's hard to do. The end-all, productive is, will you do teach self-defense and mental confidence? So those two things, hopefully, will dispel any bullying happening. And we want to really take it to the next level and get people certified in our program, especially kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That's the most prevalent time for bullying. And we want them to wear a pin that has a bull on it that says, "I am against bullying," and if it happens in my school, I'm going to stand up for it and get out of that situation and get that kid out of there. Because the last thing that happens is, the bully wants a little bit of attention. They start getting attention in that certain atmosphere, and all of a sudden, talking and verbal judo, which we teach, all of a sudden, isn't real effective because that kid is getting attention, or that bully is getting attention. So we teach the confidence that they can get through that part, and I'll be all for that. That's what it does. We also have adults, and we do, you know, get yourself in really awesome shape with heart rate monitoring. So if you guys want to come in, we sell peace of mind. It's not only physical fitness. It's great to be in shape, don't get me wrong. But unless you're right in the middle of diabetes, people don't really care about it. But if you want a peace of mind, if you don't want to go on Facebook and badmouth other people all the time, come and train, and you won't want to do that at all. So, thank you for your time, everybody. Thank you so much.
And again, a little more information?
Yeah, the 28th, we're going to do it at our location at 10:00 AM, 10 to 11. And like I said, it's free. Bring your kids in. But more importantly, adults as well, the adults have to hear it as well, because it is important. And it's tough for a kid on his own, who's in that situation, who doesn't know what to do. Like I tell you, we teach verbal judo, which means if you call me a name, then I'm going to say, listen, I don't, you know, I am sorry you feel that way, but I'm worth more than what you think in my own head. And I'm going to say, listen, I think you're pretty cool. And that's called verbal judo. We try and turn the situation around. And we do a $5 bill. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, but a $5 bill. If I took a $5 bill out of here, how much is it worth? It's worth $5. If I call it fat, stupid, ugly, and I turn it around, how much is it still worth? $5. So no matter what you say to that $5 bill, it doesn't lose its value. Kids got to understand that. They're worth more than every $5 bill in the world. So if anybody says anything to them, to demean them, they got to know that that doesn't mean anything. So that's what we teach.
Very good.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. And last thing I have is, today, we attended the annual meeting of the DuPage Convention and Tourism Bureau, and we're very honored to see Larry Forsberg as the, who has been elected as the new Chairman of the Board for the Tourism Bureau. You're going to stay for five years like the other guy? No? Okay. But anyhow, a good day. Judy Sue was there. She's now become, for DuPage Tourism Bureau, a goodwill ambassador for all of us. She loves DuPage County, loves the communities. So a lot of positives at this luncheon today. But of course, the big one was Larry being elected as the Chairman for the next year or two, anyway. And that's all I have, sir.
And we were displayed, Westmont was on the slide presentation a number of times. So I think that may happen this whole year.
Matter of fact, we'll pass this around. This is their new brochure, and the NSA cover is Westmont. So.
All right. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I want to congratulate the Fire Department on an open house. Was there Saturday. Didn't rain till after 3 o'clock, so you guys planned that really well. So good job. Secondly, before our meeting tonight, we had a Finance Committee meeting. We discussed our 2017 property tax, our 2017 levy. It is for revenues in the year 2018, 2019. At our November 9 finance meeting, which will be here at 4 o'clock, we are going to discuss the proposal and the estimate of aggregate tax levy and transfer of debt service. Then there is also going to be a public hearing and the December 7th meeting of the Village Board, which should be here at 6 o'clock. Anyone interested in attending is welcome to attend. And then just again, as a public service announcement, our next Finance Committee meeting will be November 9th at 4 o'clock. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Saturday, we have our Public Works Open House on October 14th. And Noriel, that starts at what time? I apologize. I did not have the time, and I should know it.
9:00 AM, over at the Public Works Water Division site.
Just at the Water Department?
It's actually at both sites. So 9:00 AM to about 11:00 is going to be a presentation and a tour of our water plant. Okay? And then a tour of the, actually, the facility itself. And then from 11:00 to 1:00, over at the Public Works Street Division, a tour of that facility along with some food.
Great. Thank you. And we invite everyone to come out and take a tour. The Environmental Improvement Commission Committee had their fall plant and tree sale last week, and it was a great success. For the first time, for a first-time event, it was an outstanding, and we had sold over 60 trees and shrubs. Jan Roll from the Conservation Foundation said it was a very good success for our first time. This year, the pumpkin composting will be Saturday after Halloween, from 9:00 AM to noon, at the Richmond Education Gardens in Apparary, at the corner of South Richmond and East Quincy. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, in the recent events that we've seen in Vegas, and the hurricanes and everything going on, I'd really like to just thank our first responders, Chief Riley, Chief Gunther, and Chief Weiss, who's not here tonight. But I heard a statement on the news coverage that they send in the best of us for the rest of us. And I thought that that really holds true, and it really seemed to hit home. So again, guys, thanks for everything you do, and your staff. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any of the trustees see anything? If not, I'll ask Manager May to please read.
First on the consent agenda this evening, board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held September 28th, 2017. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 12, and the aggregate amount of $1,306,211.35. We have two purchase orders this evening. First one is AECom Technical Services. This is an open purchase order for the engineering design agreement that was already awarded, in the amount of $795,000. Second purchase order is Harris Computer Corporation, $24,913.84, represents the annual maintenance fees for MSI, which is our financial software. The total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 12 is therefore $2,126,125.19. And that is the entire consent agenda this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made and second to approve. On to question. Any of the audience, seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, 505 North Blackhawk Drive, lot width variance and plot of subdivision. Board to consider in ordinance approving the following requests from Haiti Enterprises Incorporated for the following. One, zoning code variance request to allow the creation of two lots with substandard lot widths in the R3 Single Family Detached Residents District. And two, two preliminary plot of subdivision request to split one lot into two buildable lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residents District. And we have Director Ziegler for giving us more information.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a variance and subdivision approval for a project that initially received identical approvals back in 2006. Since that time, the variance expired, and therefore, the applicant needed to reapply. Planning and zoning commission last month discussed issues, including stormwater management in the area, how utilities would be connected throughout the neighborhood to the property, the size of the detention in the rear yard, and the subsequent usability of the rear yard due to the size of the stormwater, and the character of the neighborhood, as there have been variations approved on Blackhawk before, along Warwick, and the sizes of the lots in comparison to this one. The recommendation to the Village Board failed to pass by a three to four vote. The minutes were attached, as well as a letter from the applicant. And a representative from 505 North Blackhawk is available, and I'm also available for any questions.
Do I have anybody here before Mr. Daniels? Could anybody here from the audience who would like to comment on this? And podium's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mark Daniel. I'm an attorney that specializes in land use and development, 90% of the time in litigation when things go the wrong way. I'd like to circulate a large format version of one of the exhibits to the letter that was submitted. I am representing Haiti Enterprises. I think you all are aware of this development. I don't want to get into the history of it. Given that we have a 7 o'clock event tonight, I also want to be very quick. This subdivision lies in a district. It's an R3 district. The original subdivided territory decades and decades ago included the area from Cass to Ogden, a couple blocks into Clarendon Hills, and south down the Naperville Road. The subdivision in the residential area originally was comprised of all 100-plus-foot wide lots, most of them 103 to 105. Today, there are 81 lots in the R3 territory between Ogden, Cass, Naperville Road, and Richmond, which is the east boundary of Westmont. I didn't count anything in Clarendon Hills, but there are dozens of lots that are less than 60 feet wide in Clarendon Hills as well. I did not get into that for the evaluation. I think there are two key components to the presentation. When there's a prior subdivision approval with variances, you look at trend of development and character of the neighborhood from two perspectives. What is it now, and has it changed since the last approval? Since the last approval in 2006, the character of the area really hasn't changed. Nothing has changed within the block. Nothing has changed within the neighborhood. The village's zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan hasn't changed. The one thing that has changed that applies from a regulatory perspective is the countywide stormwater and floodplain ordinance. That's gotten more restrictive, and compliance with that is a benefit to everybody in the neighborhood. The water comes out cleaner at a slower pace than it does today on the property. So things should improve with the proper engineering, and certainly without proper final engineering, no permit issues. To the extent that these lots are proposed at 51 and 1/2 feet wide, what we're looking at is completing the interior block face of Blackhawk. So if you work south of Ogden Avenue on the east side, you've got Standard Market, okay, non-residential. Then you have the narrower subdivided lots that were approved by variance at different times, our lot and a corner lot. This lot is the only lot that is an interior lot on that block face that exceeds 52 feet wide. So this is consistent with the block face. From a density perspective, I want to touch on that. Obviously, I respect the folks in the Plan Commission. I think when the density issue came up, Mr. Watson probably was not prepared to address it, quite frankly. It's a complicated issue when you try to equate lot width and density. Lot width affects the size of the lot in just one respect, but it doesn't apply to density. If this variance is approved, this block, as far as residential density is concerned, lies in the middle of the pack for this R3 district. All right? Frankly, the compliant lot, the more compliant block to the west, if you take the west block face of Blackhawk, you've got a subdivision in there that spans the block on a cul-de-sac. That block complies with lot width, but those lots are so small in comparison to any other lot, that it becomes one of the most dense blocks in Westmont. So you have lot width compliance, yes, but you have the most dense block within the area. So they really don't, they don't tie together. The density in the block will be substantially the same as what you had prior to the expansion of Standard Market. You might recall that towards the southwest corner of their parking lot, there was a home that was demolished to extend a drive aisle and some parking spaces to the south. I may have said southwest. It's the southeast portion of the property. So one home was lost. You're gaining a home here. The exhibit that we circulated is just a visual highlight of the narrow lots, which are in green, that exist today, and the lots that are capable of subdivision into narrower lots, marked in yellow. Those green X's highlight the 81 existing lots down the road, however you get there, whether it's by variance or by application of a footnote to Section 6.04. You've got dozens of other lots that are capable of subdivision down to the narrower lot width. Okay? You could have an additional 70 lots that come out of that, based on 6.04 of the zoning ordinance. So from the perspective of dealing with the block face... So from the perspective of dealing with the block face, the block and the entirety of the zoning district, this project remains consistent with planning in the area. Under the express terms of the ordinance, again, it's a footnote to Section 6.04, in this instance, the owner and applicant applied for the subdivision approval, received it, and then closed on the property, and the economy tanked. At that point in time, there was a decision made that everything would be set over, and you know, he did so at his own peril under the ordinances, and that's why he reapplied. Under the circumstances with a negative recommendation, this is a pretty important meeting because four out of the six trustees have to vote in favor. It's one of the reasons why you have a long letter from me in your packet. I addressed it in writing because I didn't want to get into all of the elements of the variation publicly, but I think the primary objection was the character of the block face, the density within the block, and the comparative density within the neighborhood. And I think between the spreadsheet and what you can see among the different blocks, that this approval of the variation is going to be entirely consistent with what you have in the ordinance and with what you've approved previously as a municipality. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about the project. On the stormwater side, there are two points that I'd like to make. Well, I've already made one of them. It will be better than what is out there now, first of all. One of the neighbors had written a letter about what happens with the stormwater. And you know, the stormwater essentially ran from north to south within the block. That's essentially, that's the primary flow. And the obligation of Haiti Enterprises is to design this site so that it can take and continue to convey at the same rate and flow, possibly better depending on how things work during engineering, the stormwater that comes onto its property and the stormwater from the hard surfaces on its property. So, I wanted to address that because I did see a letter in the packet that raised that concern. Another neighbor, I think it was at 316 Traulby, had raised a question about a utility line that splits his property. Essentially, it's a line that runs east to west. I think he's got a pool on the north side, and his home is on the south side closer to Traulby. In that instance, Mr. Watson stated that he'll do what ComEd requires him to do, and that's, that's an accurate answer. But you know, you think about it, if you have a neighbor that wants to relocate a property line, there's certainly room for cooperation. If ComEd discussions are underway, we raise the issue with the owner of 316, and we look at it and say, you know, this is what we're doing. If you want to do some work at the same time, maybe there's a way to work something out. At least talk to ComEd and see what you want to do. But ComEd really does control that. We do intend to comply with all the utility requirements, and we really can't deviate from that under the code. But, those are the two issues. If you have questions about the table or how we approach the analysis, please feel free to ask, and I'll be happy to respond, anything that you've got.
Before we ask questions, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve Barker.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second to approve as presented. On the question.
Okay.
Trustee Addington.
Well, of course, this is my neighborhood, and as this graphically points out, you know, the original lots in northeast acres were all 102 by 297, and they've been subdivided 15 different ways. My lot is a third of that. I'm 102 by 99, which is about 10,000 square feet. These lots, actually, with 49 feet of frontage, but 297 deep, is more like 15,000 or 14,000 something.
It's substantially in excess of the 7,800.
Bigger than, bigger than mine, but not as, you know, but a short frontage. I'm more concerned, and would like to hear more from staff, because just south of this property on Blackhawk is a detention pond that has overflowed several times over the years, and that's my more concerned with what, how this affects the stormwater side of it, you know? I know there seem to be some concern that 49-foot lot would not be acceptable. Again, if you've got almost 15,000 square feet of land, we're fine, you know? Especially with the way that they've gerrymandered my neighborhood as far as different lot sizes. But I think the stormwater, again, you're taking, there's a house there now, I believe.
Yes.
It's a little bit aged?
Probably more than a little bit.
Yeah. Pretty good size, if I remember correctly.
It is. The impervious surface, I believe, could increase slightly, but not to the point where it's creating a problem. The stormwater ordinance requires that we hold and detain it. Now, the same amount of water should be leaving our property at the same rate, volume, and direction as before, so as, at least within our property lines for these two lots, we've got to keep things the same. If there's more necessary, sometimes that occurs during final engineering, to benefit that pond to the south, staff can talk about it with the owner, but generally, we just have to focus on those four lot lines. If a raindrop falls and it's supposed to go to that pond, it stays in the direction of that pond.
Yeah. Noriel.
Thank you. Good evening. Just for, to keep it simple, this, right now, the lot split itself, the subdivision, is proposing detention in the rear yard. So essentially, what they had described about keeping that there should be no negative impact to people downstream, it's yes. Both the Village of Westmont Stormwater Ordinance and DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, which is more of the water quality aspect, will be required of the site. Right now, as proposed, they are showing a detention in the rear.
To the DuPage County standards, by today's standards?
That is correct.
And, and so has that changed since the planning and zoning?
The volume has not changed. Okay? So they are still providing the detention that is required since the original. Of that, that's going to be changing is what the, let's just call it, it won't be a grass bottom basin. It will be some kind of native plantings where that would assist in meeting the requirements of DuPage County itself.
So since 2006, when this was originally approved, how has the county stormwaters regulations changed?
More of a water quality feature.
More of the water quality, not necessarily a volume of retention?
Correct.
Correct.
This one, actually, if, under county requirements only, the detention would not be required. Westmont's ordinance is the one that's triggering the detention.
And this is more of a dry detention? It's not, there's not going to be water back there all the time?
Correct.
How deep?
I don't remember offhand, to be honest.
All right.
Now, that could change.
It is because what they're proposing is a fairly extensive holding area. If we do have that four, or five, or six inches of rain, that might have it filled. When it's dry, is it still, could it possibly be usable for a backyard? Because it seems like the detention is taking on a lot of their backyard.
The detention, as shown, has, the actual configuration has not changed from the original design. However, when we were looking at it back in 2006, that was before the actual reconstruction of Blackhawk. Now that Blackhawk has been reconstructed, and there is an available storm sewer system, there are options for the engineering to be either deeper or a little bit more shallow, more usable space in the backyard. That can all change during the actual design. But what is being proposed is actually the bare minimum, does show the volume that is going to be required, it does show the native plantings of the, that's going to meet the requirements of DuPage County. Now, also, it shows the easement that hasn't been changed yet, but it can be reduced depending on the size of the detention that is being proposed.
You know who lives next to the existing detention south?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, when we talk about open space, usable land, right now is shown, it is being shown with native plantings. That is the requirement of DuPage County. Now, there's other options that they can try to do, bioswales and such, to meet the water quality standard, but it will not be what you would normally see as a grass bottom.
Additional questions?
I have a question for Jill. What is the lot coverage on this thing? Maybe Noriel knows it. On both lots, I'm sure they're managing.
Under 35.
It's under 35.
Yeah, it meets our 35% requirements. I'm just trying to find the exact amount.
With the, I guess where I'm struggling is the large retention pond, the fact that the home would never have a deck, or any, well, if it had a deck, it would have a very small deck.
Yeah. They're currently showing two proposed patios.
Oh.
Okay, 20 feet by 12 feet wide.
And that's within the 35. That's not in addition to?
Correct. It's the, right now, as shown, it's just showing a box. It's just showing a square box for the, the purposes, they don't actually have a full design on the, the single family.
At the end of the patio, does the slope start?
Looks like pretty close, yeah.
There seems to be about a 20-feet distance.
Additional to the 20-foot?
Right from where the patio actually ends, I'm just looking at the, you know, the schematic. I don't have an actual engineer scale with me, but it looks like there's, before the basin actually starts, about 20 feet.
So they would have about 30 feet of flat land? Okay.
And then from the planning and zoning, they were talking about the approximate cost of the house. What was that?
I can't speak to that.
Was there, they were looking at 700 and some thousand dollars, is that?
For the approximate cost of each of these homes, or the approximate cost of a single large home? For here, you know, in theory, you could construct a home that's in the 650 range. I can't speculate too much on that. I think for a large home on both lots, the 750, my recollection is the 750 came up in connection with development of one home on that wide of a lot, and it not being an attractive option because of the disparity between this lot and the other ones in the block with the transition to Standard Market.
Okay. So the 750 was for one home, and these would be slightly less than that?
Right. That's, that's correct. And if...
Trying to get a visual there, because it, as I, as I thought about it and looked at it, it seemed to me that we were trying to shoehorn something in there, and that's where I struggle. I have a 50-foot lot, and I have a tiny house. And if you put a larger home in there, it doesn't appeal to me.
This one would meet your, all of your zoning requirements, with the exception of the lot width. And on the detention side of things, the only comment that I'd like to add is that when you go through zoning, you need to show that you can meet the county stormwater ordinance and the village's requirements. It may not be the final design. It may be that the village prefers a bioswale, or that something with this power line in the neighbor develops where you don't want to have that pond, but there are alternatives to developing that detention plan that might alter this. We just have to show the capacity, and we need to show that it's not going to be.
Yeah, you're showing that you can meet the requirements.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Just a quick question, Mayor, probably for Jill. The two homes that are already built there, what's the lot depth on those? Is it same exact size? Do you go to a little bigger?
No, I believe those ones were 300.
300, okay.
North?
Yeah, to the north, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I think Harold, or Bruce, when you were talking about, if you go, I think about a third of a block south of Traulby, there's two brand-new homes built there, and that's where I think those numbers came from. That was two lots that was subdivided into three. I think those are like 60 by the, or 65 by the 297. And, yeah, those are big houses.
Yeah. But 65 is a lot different than 49.
Absolutely.
And just in general, this is one of our, I forget where it is on the list, Steve, you probably know the number, but I gotta think that this is the second or third worst area for flooding. I think in that corridor, was that, is that Warwick Street and Traulby and Blackhawk, obviously, at Ogden has issues, so I have concerns.
Trustee Nero, you were talking about the lots just north, correct?
That's right, yeah, with the two homes.
They're 300, so you can see there that this whole distance is 300.
Any additional question?
Yes. I might as well ask it. Are we aware of other lots that are less than 50 feet? In the entire town, in the neighborhood?
In town, you have well over 100. I'm sorry, less than 50 or less than 60?
Less than 50.
Less than 50, you probably have, in this neighborhood, eight. In this particular R3, so if you take that over throughout the village, maybe 20, 24, but that's less than 50. I mean, most of them are around 50 to 51, 51 and 1/2, because of the 103 lot width that was traditionally used for these historic subdivisions.
Okay. Are there any of those that are new construction? Do you know?
Yes, there are. The trend over time, there, well, there was a, a collection of them approved in 2005. There were some approved, you've got this one in 2006. There were some approved in the mid to late 90s. The bulk of these lots came around probably during the 1970s.
Right.
And we identified that in the table.
Yeah.
That's here. And I suppose, when you take a look at the block, there's been a lot of impervious surface added, and over time, like the older narrow lots on the backside of the block, those didn't have to have as much detention.
Right.
As the ones to the north of us, or as our property will have to have.
Right. Well, I understand that you can meet the requirements. I believe that, because, well, you'll be forced to meet the requirements, so it's a matter of lot size to me, and what's going to be on that lot.
Right. And I would just encourage the trustees to consider that when you meet those requirements, you're not having that adverse stormwater impact that seems to be underlying some of the concerns.
Trustee Barker, I'm sorry, I didn't... I know you mentioned 49-foot-wide lots. These lots are proposed at 51.5 feet each.
I thought it was 49. Okay.
It's 103 feet in width currently, which will be divided into 51.5.
Same size as yours.
And 51 is pretty common over there.
Lot of 102s.
Yeah.
Taking the 51, this is 103.
Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
Are there any other houses, and I don't want to put you on the spot, that have a lot of detention in their backyard? That's being, you know, something similar where it's, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
It is common practice for any subdivision here in the village that we would require detention. So since I've been here at the village since 2000, just about every project, every subdivision that we have, we have required detention. Now, in extreme cases where there have shown engineering concerns, there has been some in the past where we had allowed cash in lieu for that stormwater detention. However, it had to be an engineering reason, not a financial reason. We understand that the village is predicated upon pushing the stormwater. That's why we have only a handful of nuisance stormwater issues in town. We have a pretty good handle in our stormwater requirements since it's been implemented back in the 80s. We don't allow cash in lieu just for financial reasons. There has to be an engineering issue where it cannot be designed.
And I know it's going to be dry. They are, what I'm concerned about is, do they have a backyard, basically? Are they going to be able to use their backyard?
Well, as shown, the design has not changed since 2006. It shows the same layout, okay? Now, what I had indicated is that there are options for the engineering, but they chose to keep it as shown from 2006. I cannot comment on that, except for the fact is, is that we do have an available storm sewer, where there are options to deepen the storm sewer, push it back in the backyards as such. But as shown, it is the same layout as proposed in 2006.
So, I'm sorry, how much would they gain in backyard if they altered their plans? Did they gain another 20?
I, difficult for me to say, yeah.
But the other options would provide a larger flat area for the backyard?
Yes. The, the storm sewer, as, built in, when the Blackhawk Drive was reconstructed, is deeper. So now, the outlet for the basin can actually be, it'll, you know, less shallow, deeper in the back, pushed over to the rear yard, but that would have to be designed.
And in that scenario, would the storm, would our system take it to connect to the storm sewer?
Well, yes. Essentially, now, our storm sewer that we had designed is for everything in that, that's tributary in that area. So the basin itself, right now... in that, that's tributary in that area, so the basin itself, right now, if, no, no change on the property is now being, if you get the rain event, it's still sheet-flowing toward our storm sewer, and we would accept that water as it would become into our air, storm sewer system, now, as the properties are built and you have additional impervious area, that's where the design of the detention facility is being implemented, and that is going to release the storm sewer that's created, the stormwater that's created from these basins, and release at a controlled rate toward our storm sewer system.
Would that be, Mr. Daniel, would that be, um, an option you would consider?
As, as far as all the engineering options are concerned, between preliminary, which is what you see here, and final, I think he'd certainly consider that, I, I think the difficulty in managing that decision relates to doing final engineering on a project that we think should have your blessing, but we don't have it yet, and final engineering's a costly process, especially if you're oversizing something, but I think the range of options that you have could add some backyard area, um, there are lots in town that, that just don't have backyards that are perfectly compliant, and I think that one subdivision that we mentioned across to the west, Rosewood Estates, you know, it's an eighty-nine subdivision, but that's an example of a lot width compliant project with seventeen homes that have no rear yard, and it's, it's a very dense project, and this is something that's adding, uh, more space, you know, thirty-five percent of each additional square foot could be occupied, yes, but sixty-five percent of it's going to be open space.
Trustee Eddington.
Yeah, that, well, the only, the question I had is just kind of getting my arms around some of the information that was given, and for Jill, or Noriel, and probably better for Noriel, before Blackhawk Drive was redone, there was no stormwater system on Blackhawk?
No, it was, uh, what I recall was just a number of culverts put together.
A ditch system, yeah.
And when we redid and expanded it?
Well, when you put in curb and gutter.
Then you run a-
Right, so instead of-
Okay, so now we have a stormwater system, that's why the last couple of years now, that detention pond that I was talking about that's south of this property hasn't held water, but five, ten years ago, I mean, any significant rain on that thing was overflowing, its bank, I can remember the, the one homeowner, um, even building, putting sandbags, Frank Trout lived there at one time, and I think he was throwing sandbags up on that side, um, but now that, since Blackhawk got redone with a system, that detention pond has really not held much water at all, so there's, that's a change, um, which makes me feel a little bit better, okay.
Trustee Barry.
Um, just one other thing, and, and I know the owner is not here today, but, but this property has really become depleted over the last couple of years, you know, there, there's a shed that's rotting away, there's, there's, uh, some of the neighbors have complained that there's skunks living there, that, that, that really, that the property has not been maintained very well, and from talking to some of the residents, that's the concern of some of the promises from the developers, like, well, if, if this is how it's kept, what, what's going to be the finished product, is it just a money grab, and, and so that's kind of what I've heard in the neighborhood, I don't live in that neighborhood, but, but they have had some concern how the property's been kept since two thousand and six, so, um-
We don't want them.
That is something, you know, maybe to pass along to them.
No, we've talked about it, it's, it's been held for the purpose of redevelopment, and it has been minimally maintained, it wasn't in the best condition before the two thousand and six approval, so if you think about eleven years, and frankly, you know, doing the bare minimum, this, this financial crunch caused hardship for a lot of people, including the small guys that were out there, so, um, I, I do understand the concern, and Terrick and I have certainly addressed it, he's, he's a terrific man, he's in design himself, he does the interior side, he takes a lot of pride in what he does, in this instance, it is a true hardship that he's dealing with because of the, the collapse of the financial markets and the economy, on the skunk side, um, I will have him look into that immediately, because if something is being, is living in one of the buildings or structures, he should take care of that, I'm one of the eleven that likes the smell, one in eleven Americans like the smell, so that's me, but you shouldn't have it housed on site, so I will check with him on that right away.
Additional comments?
I don't have any more, I beat it to death.
Since it didn't presentation, anybody from the audience? All right, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
No.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
And motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Moving on. B, New Business B, fifteen West Quincy, Dulce, Board to Consider Ordinance Approving a Downtown Development Grant Request in the Amount of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars from Dulce in the B1 Limited Business District, and Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a straightforward facade grant request for an update to the building's awning, the exterior facade improvements are eligible for a matching grant of up to five thousand or fifty percent, and this request is for thirteen fifty, it's well within the remaining funds in our facade fund, and the, uh, it meets all of our design guidelines, and, uh, they're operating very well, as Trustee Little mentioned earlier with their wine event, and we recommend approval and look forward to the restaurant's continued success.
Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo, second, Little?
Motion been made in second, on the question.
Actually, one more comment, so, earlier this year in Community Development Committee, we talked about tying the grant approval to one year in business, uh, that was approved, and even though Dulce's has obviously been in business for a long time, the, this is new ownership, so they won't be eligible to receive the funds until February.
Additional comments? Again, their money is available, you, you still have money in there.
If any of the owners or anything were, were in, in default to us at, at the village at that point in January, uh, I don't know, can we put a rider or something in there that, that they would have to be up, up to snuff on their payments?
At Dulce?
Well, we have a partner there that's involved in, in a payment plan to the village, and I question whether we give them, we give them money when they owe us money, and, and if, if those payments weren't, stayed true-
It's a fair point, but to hold one owner of one business who may have-
I have the same problem.
Invested in another business, and that business is causing prob, yeah, I don't think you can punish this establishment for the sins of another establishment when this one has paid all the taxes, complied with all the ordinances.
Good question, any other? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Present.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
And Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Motion passes, moving on, New Business C, I'd ask the chief, parking violation penalties ordinance, Board to Proven Ordinance Amending Chapter fifty-four of the Westmont Code of Ordinances pertaining to penalties for parking violations, and I know, I'll introduce the chief, and he'll introduce the person responsible for it.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this is a issue that was brought up before the Public Safety Committee meeting at the last meeting, and I have brought my subject matter expert, Sergeant Gabarewski, in to discuss the change in the ordinance.
Good evening, uh, we researched this, and, uh, once we knew we were transitioning from handwritten parking tickets to the electronic version, uh, we, we did the research, and, one of the changes to this ordinance is that we're going to make all tickets, with a few exceptions, thirty dollars, some of those exceptions would be, uh, handicap parking, handicap parking is, uh, something that the, the state law requires a certain amount, so that one would reflect, uh, the cost that the state requires us to, the mandates, and then commercial vehicles, such as on sixty-first street, though, that, uh, fine would stay the same, as well as, uh, idling or parking of commercial vehicles, so we're not looking to change those to thirty dollars, those would stay the same, uh, another exception would be for a dog-at-large, for example, um, which, uh, you would, you could issue a thirty-dollar ticket for a dog-at-large, so you could charge also, under a village ordinance, the person, uh, a ticket, which would be far higher, um, but if it was their first offense, under what we're proposing, then you'd be able to, uh, like, for their first offense, write them a ticket for thirty dollars instead of a much higher, uh, fine, and then, uh, I would like to point out that, that our fines, uh, fall in with the surrounding communities, such as those with, uh, commuters and stuff, such as we have, uh, we also had, because we were going to the electronic version, uh, and it's a paper copy, we had to come up with something to put the paper copy into, so I'd like to pass out, so you guys could see, a version of the envelopes that we're going to be stuffing with the, the actual citations, they're, uh, water-resistant, uh, they're bright, so you can see them, and they also have instructions written on them as well, any questions?
I, I have one quick one, um-
Sure.
Everything is thirty, let's say a big rig-
Mm-hmm.
-parks, it might be cheaper for that person to pay the thirty than it would be to find a parking spot and pay for it, is, so they're still at thirty dollars, a commercial big haul, hauling rig, that'd be thirty?
It'd be thirty dollars, yes, but if they continue to do it, either going to amount, the amount's going to go up, and, and it depends where they park, too, you know, because of certain things in the ordinance.
Yep.
Lenny, what's a snow removal, uh, parking ticket?
Uh, that is actually going to change underneath this, it used to be much lower, it's going to be thirty.
And what, what is the violation there, for not removing your snow from the street?
No, 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 it's for not moving your vehicle that's parked.
In the snow route.
In, in the snow route.
Yeah, not in your own driveway.
Yeah, I was curious, it just said snow removal, but in a, in a snow route, but, I see.
So it is fifty and one fifty.
Sometimes I don't clean my snow off my car, and I don't, I don't want to necessarily get a ticket on that.
The attorney just pointed out something, that you're not changing everything, you're just, if something was higher, and he, John just pointed out.
Well, the mayor asked about idling trucks or illegally parked trucks, and you said it's thirty, but earlier you said there's a different fine structure actually for trucks, and I pointed that out to the mayor, I just want to clarify for the record that if a truck parks or idles on sixty-first street, that's a five hundred dollar penalty.
Correct.
If a truck parks or idles somewhere else, that's a fifty dollar penalty, and a second violation's a hundred and fifty dollars.
That's correct.
And each day is a new violation.
Five hundred on sixty-first street, Trustee Eddington.
We used to have a trustee that lived over there.
Oh.
That's why.
What about the, um, and I know we've, we've really, you guys have really cut down on that, but what about the guy who tries to unload cars right on Ogden Avenue?
Well, they could also be written a state ticket, so, um, they could be written, uh, a state ticket for that violation.
Okay.
It's also usually a zoning ordinance violation because it's part of the special use ordinance for all the dealers in the last fifteen or so years.
So that can be, that can really add up quickly to a lot more expensive.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And that seems to really be corrected at this point, I, I don't see a lot of that going on anymore.
Once in a very great while, you might see, later at night, you might see somebody trying to get a car off quickly and move on, but, yeah, not like it was, at all.
Seems much better, and again, this is going to help the department issuing these tickets, I like the envelope, looks-
It's going to streamline things.
Streamline, yeah.
And I like the fact that they've kind of taken a lot of these little, and it's thirty bucks.
Yeah.
And then there are some specialties, but those specialties are really, there's only like half a dozen or, or eight that are in there, so, yeah, it, it makes it easier, makes it more understandable, everybody knows, you get a parking ticket, it's thirty bucks, unless you're driving a big truck.
Is, um, buses considered trucks?
Bus, no.
No. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second, Nero.
Motion been made in second, to approve, additional questions or comments, anybody?
Could we give these back, this is like a bad feeling to have.
Ah.
With the rest of yours. Yeah, to throw it in the glove box.
He's got one filled out for you.
Yeah, right.
Um, seeing none, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes, and I do have to, Sergeant, I call him Lenny, but, um, because I can't say your last name, but, um, like, Lenny G., I call Stevie G., but, uh, you've taken over the community events-
Yes, sir.
-and, and I think you're doing a great job, you're following somebody who did a great job, Brian, for years, and I know the community appreciates it, all the organizations that put these events together, they appreciate the effort you give them, so-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep the envelopes.
He'll fill them for you later, all right.
On the back lot.
New Business D, Declaration of Village Property as Surplus, the Fire Department, Board to Consider an Ordinance to Declare Miscellaneous Fire Department Items as Surplus Property, we've got Deputy Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor, the property has outlived its useful life and outdated, non-functional and otherwise economically maintainable, the equipment be sold, donated, or scrapped as appropriate, uh, just a background, a lot of this equipment, uh, we did some fall cleaning at Station Two, and some of this is from, uh, Trustee Guzzo's father back in the day, Frank Trout, so, um, and then also, obviously, when we lost a complete engine and then just got a new ladder truck, some of that equipment already comes with the purchase, so a lot of this equipment is outdated, not useful, so we'd like to, uh, possibly donate some of this to, uh, some volunteer combination departments down state that really don't get the surplus of equipment that they could use for daily use where up here we can no longer use it.
So who is Trustee Guzzo Johan?
Yeah, I heard that, too.
You said Frank Trout real quick, so I didn't-
Did I say that, I apologize, but I meant Trustee Guzzo's father, along with Frank Trout, and Chief Weiss, so I apologize, thank you, manager.
Frank Johan, so do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo.
Second.
Motion been made, made in second, uh, on the question, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Motion passes, New Business E, Declaration of Village Property as Surplus, from the municipal, municipal service department, Board to Consider Ordinance Declaring Certain Village-Owned Vehicles as Surplus Property to Be Sold at Auction, Assistant Director Norrie.
Uh, all the property is listed and identified in the attachment that you have, all have outlived their useful life, uh, they're all outdated, non-functioning, replaced or otherwise, economically not maintainable, uh, we have seven vehicles and one set of rims that will be disposed of, uh, through the auction of the Albinoff Auction Services, which is on behalf of Dupage Mayor's and Managers Conference, any questions?
And this is a requirement by law, when you declare it surplus, so it can be sold, do I have a motion?
Oh, no, I just was going to point out that, I mean, there, this and the last item were surplus materials, the difference here besides the items is the method of disposition, so all of these items are going to auction, whereas the other ones are either discarded or, uh, donated to another needy department.
They're not the value that these-
Correct.
-these would be.
Now, the auction in the past has proven to be a, a good place for us to send these, we've gotten some good prices.
Yes, unused equipment, do I have a motion? Did I get a-
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Parker.
Motion been made in second, to approve, on the question, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, we'll move on to miscellaneous, does, uh, anybody have any miscellaneous items they'd like to discuss tonight before the Cubs game starts?
No.
You don't have any, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Little.
Second.
Motion been made in second, to adjourn. Motion been made in second to adjourn. A roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
It's a good sign.
All right, thank, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.